We can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City, Kurt, I mean, go take roll call for us, please.
House of Member William, Reid. Stewart.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Brent.
Here.
And Mayor Snyder.
Here. So our study session is to continue discussions for our twenty-six budget. So Director Clark, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Study session number three. And we're gonna go over our, uh, street funds tonight, our water and sewer, a couple other funds. Uh, so I'll try to kinda go with the same format that I did before. And of course, if you've got questions, we'll do the best to try to answer them. I also got Jason here, uh, he's been a big help in trying to get all this together, um, so I appreciate him. More than you can know. So our first fund that we're gonna go over is Fund Two-O-Two, this is our major street fund. And this would be for streets that are outside the city limits. Excuse me, I'm gonna go over the columns again, so we understand what we're looking for or what we're looking at. Twenty-twenty-four is the first column, just there for to look back on, I don't get a feel for what it was. In twenty-twenty-four, those are actual indie numbers. The second column is what was approved by council for twenty-twenty-five. The third column is ten months of actual activity for twenty-twenty-five. The next column is the projected amount for the end of the year. Based on what's happened so far and anything else that we were able to, uh, put in there. And then the sixth column, let's see, one, two, three, four, the fifth column. Is a nice tool that I put in this year, similar to what we've been looking at. It will tell you the differences between what we're ending up with versus what was originally budgeted. And then, of course, the second to last column is the budget that we're, that we are requesting. And of course, the last column is another tool to show you what the difference is between what we ended up with in twenty-twenty-five. And what we're asking for for twenty-twenty-six. So as we look at this, um, we budgeted for, and there's different types of revenues here. Um, there's some small state, state grants, we get, uh, Act Fifty-One money that comes in from the state. Um, but most of this, and then I wanna point out, there's a new revenue source. That's coming about in twenty-twenty-six, and that's called the P A twenty-two. It's kinda similar to the Act, Act Fifty-One money, but it's something new that the state made, made us aware of. So that's gonna help out both the major and the local street fund.
Go ahead.
So the different, I, in reviewing our debt service document you shared this last week or Monday. Um, it seems that two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollar additional change.
Yes.
Is the equivalent to our debt service. For the water, is that correct?
The debt service for the water? We're, we're under major street.
I understand, but there, we are in the, as I understood. The last meeting, we were talking about Baroque and Berrion Street and the, and the debt service for the water tower. That we were gonna be paying two-hundred-and-sixty-eight or two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars every year. So my question is, is it, are these numbers connected? Because of the roadwork that we had to do as part of, of the water projects that we're doing.
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's just a.
Just coin.
Just coin.
It's just a new revenue source that the state is giving out. So I think hopefully we'll get it every single year, but it'll start in twenty-twenty-six. So if we look at what I budgeted, nine-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand or what we budgeted. Uh, we came in at nine-hundred-and-thirty-one, close to nine-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. The big difference is the state shared revenue, the Act Fifty-One money. Uh, you never know what you're gonna get on that, so it's based on what the state actually sends you. So that's really the big difference between the revenues. But next year, I lowered it a little bit based on what we got for. Uh, actually, I got something, uh, through the email that showed that we're gonna get just a little bit less. For, uh, twenty-twenty-six, but luckily we had that new revenue source. So if you look at what was budgeted for twenty-twenty-five versus what's budgeted for twenty-twenty-six. It's probably two-hundred-and-sixty thousand higher.
Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, um, can you explain Act Fifty-One on motorized?
Um, I guess it's, it's, it's like a gas and weight tax. When you go to the pump and you pay tax on your gas, and it goes into the state fund. And then based on your population or your city or village or whatever. Um, you get a share of it. Do you wanna add anything, Doug?
What this is, this is the beginning of, I think, the expenses, the non-motorized. Um, non-motorized would be those things shared in the right-of-way, like a sidewalk. Um, or something, an improvement, it's non-motorized improvements. Under the Act Fifty-One law, um, ten percent of your Act Fifty-One money, whether it be, um. Major or local streets, over a ten-year period, ten percent of that money has to be spent on those things. That are non-motorized. That might be a sidewalk, those could be ADA ramps, those things affecting the Act Fifty-One right-of-ways. So again, this is going into the expenses.
Councilman Sturridge.
So City Mayor Terry, is it a, they have to be spent or up to a certain amount can be spent on non-motorized?
Over a ten-year period, so you might have a sidewalk project. And you spend more than that ten percent in one year, but it has to average out. Ten percent over a ten-year period.
Are there, uh, are there penalties if we don't or something?
No, I've never seen that. I've never seen that.
But we look at it like spend at least one percent of the Act Fifty-One revenue every year. Yeah, so. And speaking with Jason, we're gonna try to do a little bit more, uh, sidewalk work, so I did bump that up to fifteen thousand for twenty-twenty-six. And that's well over the one percent that we're required to do. And ten percent over the ten years. Any questions on the revenues? Then we'll go to the. Departments within the major street fund, this is, uh, our maintenance department. And, uh. Again, we're gonna look at what I budgeted, or what we budgeted was three-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. We spent five-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. Uh, when we look at the column two, uh, the fifth column, it'll show what our differences are. It was quite a bit, maybe thirty, thirty-five thousand in payroll related. Um, our materials and supplies is up thirty-one thousand. Based on what was budgeted. Professional services, there was nothing budgeted for that. On the contracted services, those are way up, and I think most of it was. Uh, the work we did on that big street.
South Eaton.
South, uh, South Eaton, you can talk about that, that was close to fifty thousand dollars of it. Of course, that wasn't budgeted because it came up.
That was the undercutting that we had to do, where they had eighteen inches to two feet of clay underneath South Eaton Street. So that came in at like fifty-five thousand for them to remove it and put all the material back in, like an action for the asphalt.
Um, there was some other stuff there at the bottom. Uh, equipment rental was up. Gasoline, I think we started using the gasoline out to the. Equipment fund, and we stopped using the, um, gas car, but, um, there was nothing budgeted for that. Cause I didn't see anything in twenty-four.
We actually, right now, we pay, um. Paying two-twenty-eight a gallons or average for premium. Rack fuel and any about, uh, less than three dollars a gallon for diesel. So we've switched public safety over to buying or getting their gas from Public Works as well. Because it saves them money that was able to pay that, some of that savings was able to pay for the contractual services. It went in to pay for the electric fence that, uh, keep people in and out, so that way. Public safety can come during the middle of the night and can fuel up.
And then you can see what we, uh, budgeted for, Jason and I worked on this together. Uh, the main thing to look at is the differences between where we ended up at. This is the last column and what we're asking for this year. You can see the payroll is up quite a bit. And then we have, uh, a reduction in the materials, hopefully we won't have to do as much. Um, the contracted services, there's two projects. That we're working on that are about seventy-nine thousand dollars, those are those two road projects, if you wanna explain those.
Uh, I'm looking to repave, uh, all of both the hundred blocks of Porter and Center. Uh, so that way the downtown will be complete with the exception of Erie Street from Superior to Albion. We put in for a grant for that, we're just waiting to hear back if that would be, uh, awarded to us. So that way, most of all the downtown will be completed.
Cass was on that list. What? Cass is not on that list.
Cass is getting done through the, uh, water project. Um, but Cass Street is also part of. From Anne to Albion is also getting done, and that's outside of the water contract. Cause if we, like we said before, if we've left from Anne Street, those last two blocks. There by the senior center and everything else around it, including Albion Street, got paved. That probably wouldn't be too good, so, um. That's where some of the, the money we budgeted for was to pay for thirty-nine-five for each block of Porter and Center. What that was, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand is our match for Cass Street.
Alright, so that's, that's gonna be a little higher than the previous year for those two projects, um. And if you look at the overall budget compared to, or ending twenty-twenty-five. We're going to ask for a reduction of sixty-one thousand three oh-two, this is the last column all the way down to the bottom.
You're asking for an increase. Right? You're asking for six oh-six-three-four-five and you're planning a.
Oh, oh, I'm, uh, I'm looking at the.
Yeah, and this is just in the maintenance.
Right, no, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I really.
I've been looking at numbers for two weeks.
Yeah, no, I. At least you got a lot of size between you.
Alright, this is our traffic services section, not much goes on here. I bud, uh, we budgeted one thousand four hun, uh, one thousand four thirty-five, it came in at two thousand ninety-five. Next year, we got about two, two thousand budgeted. It's mostly just salaries and wages and, uh, equipment rental, whenever they work on stuff like that. And then we'll go to, uh, winter maintenance, and I believe this is when you're doing your plowing for the road. Yeah, um, so we budgeted twenty-three-six twenty-five, it came in a little bit higher. Not sure why I didn't budget for materials last year, but maybe something should've been in there. And then, uh, the equipment rental was a little bit higher. And then we had some gasoline that we started this year, a different way of charging for that. So we spent forty-four-five fifty, next year we're asking for forty-five-six forty. Which is kinda similar to what we spent this year. Thousand to ninety more. And this was, uh. Fifteen thousand, I think this was from Concorde Beamer's.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, that, that was something that wasn't budgeted, but I think it came up, there's nothing budgeted for next week or next week, next year. But I'm not sure, it was a fifteen thousand dollar contracted bill from Concorde.
Yeah, that was for taking care of, picking up, uh, the million of the roadway.
Okay, this is our, uh, truck lines, High Ninety-Fourth Truck Line. We do get reimbursed for some of this, we file a report once a quarter and we get money back from the state. Um, we budgeted, uh. Let's see, fifteen thousand four fifty-five in expenditures, eight thousand in revenues. And we receive nineteen thousand, hopefully in revenues is what I got budgeted there. Uh, we're gonna spend eighteen-nine fifty-eight, so we're just got, about gonna break even there. And then next year, so the revenues are up and the, um. Materials are up a little bit. Compared to what was budgeted for, and the second to last column is our budget for next year. Uh, seventeen thousand six fifty, which is just similar to about what, uh, we spent. And then we're looking to get hopefully nineteen thousand next year and, uh. Routine maintenance reimbursements. So that's pretty self-explanatory there, uh, this is the M-ninety-nine Truck Line. And. I budgeted, or we budgeted ten thousand for revenues here, eighteen-five sixty-five in expenses. Uh, we have budgeted, or projected that we're gonna get eleven thousand nine hundred. And the expenses are gonna be twenty-four-three seventy-five. So the expenses are a little bit higher, mainly in the materials and supplies, I'm on the third to last column there. Uh, the revenues, I think, will come in a little bit higher, that's the nineteen hundred. Next year, we're budgeting ten thousand for revenue and twenty-two-one thirty-five for expenses. And, um, just about similar to what happened. Hopefully, we can break even on that as well. Then we go to. Our M-one-ninety-nine Truck Line, and this looks similar. Eight thousand or six thousand, we budgeted for expenses were ninety-nine thousand seven fifty-five. Uh, we actually gonna receive ten-five. I have this budget, or projected to spend sixteen-two forty-five, so we're gonna come in just a little over there based on the budget. And they're basically in the last two numbers here, but the revenues are up forty-five hundred. Next year's budget's gonna be ten-five. Our expenses are gonna be fifteen oh-three-five, so we're gonna hopefully at twelve hundred to the good. And then we're going to go to our transfers out, again, this is the major street fund. Every year, uh, the major street funds sends two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand over to the local street fund. For local street projects, that's been going on since I've been here and before I was here. Then also in twenty-twenty-five, uh, thirty-eight thousand nine forty. And in twenty-twenty-six, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand nine hundred will be sent over to the MTF Debt Service Fund. That's a new fund that was set up. Also in twenty-twenty-five, a hundred thousand dollars, uh. That actually should say, yeah, to the equipment fund for the deficit elimination plan. And that will, um, only happen this year, it won't go next year. That's a one, a one-time thing. So. Total transfers, um, for next year, five hundred and forty-four, nine hundred. And again, the reason why that transfer's so much bigger in twenty-six is because we use bond premium money to pay the first bond payment. And our debt service fund, and that fund was set up this year when we sold the bonds, um, to help with the, um. Road portion of the water system project. Any questions?
That's a major street fund. Okay, the next one we'll go to is our local street fund. I think it's right, this is everything, streets that were paved inside the city. Just to clear up, there's a difference between major and local streets. Lot of it has to do with width, length, a lot of it has to do with. Traffic counts, major street also has to, um. Usually exit or entrance from its primary, either a county primary or a, um, trunk line. So the state determines that there's only gonna be so many major streets in a municipality. Everything else becomes a local street. And it takes a lot to become a major street. Again, it's based on traffic counts, width, length, some of the physical characteristics. It also has to empty usually or entrance of a trunk line. So we have fifty-four miles of streets in the city. And out of that fifty-four, what would you say, probably, oh, probably one-third is a major street. The rest are probably two-thirds, yeah, thirteen miles of major and the rest are local streets. Those would be your neighborhood, so. That's just. They're fine out.
Okay, now, excuse me, now we're on our local. Our local street fund. And the revenues are similar to what you see in the major street fund, just not as much, usually about a third. Um, so we do get, um, some state grants, um, we do get. Our Act Fifty-One money, we should get, uh, the P A money as well, that's a new revenue source. Uh, we earn some interest on investments, some other revenues that are small and reimbursements, not much. So when we look at what I budgeted in twenty-twenty-five, it was three-hundred-and-thirty-three, roughly three-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. We received three-hundred-and-forty-three, a little over three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand. Main difference was the additional. Nine thousand nine fifty over what was budgeted for our Act Fifty-One money. Next year, we're just basically about the same, except we're gonna add that P A fifty-two. So we're hoping to bring in four-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand four nineteen. And so really not much difference there based on what was budgeted and what we received and what we're looking for next year.
So what does that mean? Go ahead and say it. What does that mean in terms of actuality of happening with our streets? Are you going to prioritize or, I mean, is this, does this go for repairs?
Yeah, both local, the two oh-three and two oh-two both go towards repairs. We prioritize it, uh, our engineering firm actually does it for us. All the CASA rating, and they just completed it this summer and we just got the map of. They show us kind of ranking of one through five, uh, how bad the roadways are, so trying to go off of that.
All of them.
A good number.
There's quite a bit of red, let's see, it's five, uh, and so I'm, I'm just trying to chip away at. The bigger sandwich, I don't really have, I'm kinda going off that CASA rating and then. How bad it's, the roads are, the cost. Of what I can tackle first, there's some I'm just gonna have to budget and try to save up for, uh, and work with David. That are just outside of our, like. Take for example, East Broadwell. I would love to repave East Broadwell, uh, Maple's a major street. Um, the problem is, is that it's such a long stretch and there's such a curve to it that it's gonna be quite. Fastly, so I'm gonna have to save for that one. Um, but there's other small ones like these local streets I can take and just do. For instance, uh, if you, we might do Dean and Hogan. And you just, Cooper Street just got redone, but you have Cooper Court. Or some small street, my plan is to not just leave a small little section. For instance, we have West Broadwell. The water projects only came from Mallory to Jefferson, but from Jefferson to Albion and from Mallory to State. That's not getting redone, but I can't leave it like that. So that's where we take these funds and just pay contractor, I need you to keep going just a little bit further. And we'll pay for it out of this pocket. So. I don't have a plan planned. And I have a lot of red, so I'm trying to figure out which way to go.
Yeah, you know, because that's a kind of a sore bone, wherever you go, when are you gonna? That's right, that's right.
Mayor for Tampa.
Thanks, um, so your materials and supplies, local streets, you're dropping seventeen-seven? Was that, you're, I'm sorry, um. Four sixty-one, um, seven seventy-five?
Seven seventy-five. Um, yeah, for the amount that we're requesting.
Yeah, so I mean, if that's the, if that's the patch material and, I mean, that seems, given where we are, it seems. Premature to be cutting, patching material or.
We're gonna get another, so each time I get a semi of the mastic material, the new stuff. That is about thirty thousand, twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
I still have about half to three-quarters of a truckload left, a semi boat. So my goal is to try to use. And try to stay within budget the best I can and just get one truck, one semi boat for next year.
So this year we only used half?
Half, two-thirds-ish. It works great, it, it, it's, it works great, we're going to have to change when we do it, we're gonna have to come in. Because, for instance, when we did Erie Street, you had a whole line, it looked like a runway of traffic cones. And people will still drive through the traffic cones, and it gets on their vehicle and it does not. And so then it just peels up what we just put down, cause it has to dry. And so we've decided that when you go to do projects like that, when we go to do Erie Street again, we're gonna do it in the evening. Just to try to not to waste material.
And is it lasting like you thought it was gonna?
That's phenomenal.
Oh my god, yeah, I mean, it's.
And so.
They live on Erie Street then.
If you go down Erie Street, you come from downtown, you're going towards the college, there's a small strip that's been there, this will be its second or third year, second year. And we have done everything possible to test it out with snowplow blades to see if we could peel it up. Not one section is not one inch. So then we did the rest of that whole strip, because it's this, the strips are the seams of where they laid the asphalt. And those are the first areas that fail. So all of our roads that have been redone recently, we're trying to go back over the seams and seal it. Um, one of the other things we're looking to do is on some of our local streets and our major streets is. I've talked with the county and they're going, we're gonna partner with the county, and we're gonna do the same chip and seal that they've been doing. And that also saves the road and it saves our costs because it lowers everybody's cost. The more material they use, the cheaper it is for them. I don't have to pay a contractor to come in and do it, and I don't have to pay, uh, deployment costs. And so I get the material cheaper at their cost. And so, I get the material cheaper at their cost, they get it cheaper because I'm buying some of the product. And they literally, when they're outside the city, I told them, come on in and we'll go down Erwin, Erie, we'll just wrap right around and keep on coming. And so we're gonna try that because it's been working very well for other municipalities. Thank you.
So when you look at our budget for next year. We tighten that a little bit based on what was spent in this department from the previous year. Um, and the main difference is the uh, the payroll's up, up just a little bit. And then um, there's a lot of seventeen-seven that is for the. Materials and supplies, you were just talking about that. And then the twenty-four-five.
contractual service.
Is the professional services. We're saving an equivalent now because they are in.
Right. Right. I'm hoping to keep, maybe generate some revenue because, so the city of Marcha wants to partner with us. Some of our equipment and personnel that come do some of their patching. In return, there is, we would go off the state pricing, so that would now I pay for, make us whole, but then it would give us. A little bit extra money because they have like some, a rate, and so that way I can buy. New material at a cheaper price if I go on it with them as well.
Alright, our next uh division, our next department is traffic services. And most of this is just payroll, a little bit of equipment rental. So, um. The budget was a little under five thousand, we came in at seven thousand. Next year, we're asking for just about the same family, but most of it's just from the base. On page two or three on that. And then, this is our winter maintenance for the local streets. So, budgeting was thirty-nine, five-twenty. We came in at forty-two, seven-eighty-five, and next year. About the same thing. You never know with this, depends on. So, but it was close to what we thought. And then our transfers in, of course, is from the major street fund, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then our transfers out. Are, of course, to the new M T F debt service fund. And so a percentage of that debt payment also comes from the local street fund, it's a lot less than the other fund. The major fund, roughly two-thirds, one-third comes from the local and the other one-third comes from the major. In that bond was for the road portion of the water system project.
Can I go back to the um local street funds and the equipment rental? Do we kind of remember why our equipment rental got so high this year? With line?
Well, this is where the majority of time is spent.
The four sixty-one, nine forty-three.
Yep, so.
Thank you.
Usually, they. For the equipment rental, the Department of Transportation gives us what each equipment. Like a dump truck has an hourly rate. So if we're spending all of our time, not all of our time, but a lot of our time coal patching, fixing streets. The equipment rental goes with the payroll, so usually there's a correlation. Usually because. The maintenance crews aren't, are gonna be using the equipment and that's what they're doing, they're full patching, they're grading. They're filling in um different holes, so there's a correlation between payroll and equipment rental. And what's a dump truck's with a greater blade cost? An hour, what, sixty-four?
Ish, yeah.
So it's not actually, we're renting the?
I'm not going to a rental place, this is up from the equipment fund.
So the equipment fund owns the equipment and then major streets or the water and sewer department. Rents that equipment from the equipment fund.
Okay.
So our guys are out there doing more.
Yeah.
And then charging the equipment.
Makes sense.
So that's our local street fund. And then next fund we'll go over is our drug enforcement, our drug law enforcement fund. On two sixty-five. And I actually sat down with Aaron and Jason on this. Jason, you can kind of give him a feel for.
He's napping back there.
Is he here? Jason, you want to give, give him a little idea of this one set up to do?
So this one is the, the drug enforcement fund, that's both uh. Local and the state and federal. Um, and so this is what Aaron would use to do for trainings and some equipment and vehicles. Kind of help offset and bring a cushion to the general fund itself.
So when we look at the budget, and I think Scott put this budget together right before he left. Um, so, we were budgeting for around thirty-one thousand in revenue, a hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred in expenses. Uh, the actual numbers came out to be, I'm in the fourth column now, twenty-eight thousand five, or twenty-eight thousand two fifty-nine in revenues. And twenty-nine thousand one seventy-three in expenses. And if you go to the next column to the right, you can see a forty-thousand-dollar number negative and a twenty-five-thousand-dollar number negative. Uh, they were anticipating some training and some equipment, but nothing happened there. And then also, if you go up on top in the same column, there's a seventy-five thousand. Or seven thousand five hundred number that's negative, and a little below it, there's four thousand seven hundred. Um, these are just things that didn't happen, that were budgeted, or they came in a little lower. And then for next year, uh, just the um interest on the investments. Uh, that revenue that we've been getting for the past few years is not gonna be there. Um. And I think, Jason, if you want to explain why on that.
Uh, so when I was a task force officer of I R S, they've been paying the department, reimbursing the department. I've been a task force officer, we're sent with them since two thousand nine, and they've been paying us since two thousand nine until. May-ish of this year. When I retired, so that revenue stream of paying for. Gas, phones, vehicles, equipment, whatever I would ask for, they would pay, and then. Uh, that's, there's no more, there is not any more task force officers, so, so last of them. So that revenue kind of went with it.
And then, of course, you can see the expenses and then um Aaron does want to buy one new. Detective car, and that's what the thirty thousand dollars is for.
So the department has not bought a detective vehicle since two thousand seven. I R S has paid for all of them since then. So, that's when we'll downfall, see.
So, that's the budget on that, but we came in a lot better than what we thought, so there was, and I think that fund right now has about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars up in its. Cash.
Just one question, I see uh thirty, you know, three thirty-four K nine, so we don't have a K nine.
We do.
We do?
Sergeant Riley, it's a K nine, so he works nights. And that's a good thing.
I don't want to go to our sewer fund, on five ninety. So, this, this is a fund that runs our sewer system. So when we start with our revenues up on top here. Two point one hundred and eighty thousand. Two million one hundred and eighty thousand roughly was budgeted. I anticipate we're gonna get two million oh eighty-six thousand and some change. The one number that's lower is our charges for services. For our sewer, uh, the rest of it is pretty good, we did get a few more um. Uh, hook-on fees, that's the twenty-nine thousand, so that was good. Um, but we're still working on trying to get accurate readings on our sewer and of course our water. Um, Jason can go into more detail about that, but um I think the new meters are gonna make a huge difference. Uh, we're al- we're already seeing uh increases based on our readings being more accurate. Um, so hopefully, in twenty twenty-six, I budgeted two million one oh five. And I'm hoping and positive that we can get to that point. With our new.
I'm gonna push faster than spring. It was supposed to be six months, but we. Starting to get the runaround. Especially from commercial. Um, so we've kind of taken a little bit more. Stern stance. Uh, we will get our rewater meters, oh, we're just gonna shut you out. Because it's, David will go into the next fund and I can explain it there, I'll kind of wait till we get there.
Okay, yeah. This is not as bad, really, um, I mean, I would like to see it, based on what we budgeted, but I think eventually we're gonna get there. And that's why we're doing the new meter, uh, meters project. Um, so that's our revenues, uh, for next year, it's two point, two eight one hundred and ninety-two thousand. So roughly a hundred and six thousand dollars more, and most of it is sitting in the uh charges for our sewer rates. Now, when we go down to our overhead, and that's what we're looking at in the next section, it's all the expenses that we incurred to run that system. Um. So when we look at what was budgeted, it'd be on the next page here. So we budgeted one point, or one million five hundred and ninety thousand nine sixty. I want to point out that part of that figure is depreciation, it's the figure that's above that. And remember that depreciation is a non-cash expense, it's something that we bought years ago and we're depreciating that over time. So you remember when I did the debt elimination plan, the state allows us to back that out? And that's what's gonna make that plan eventually get rid of that deficit because of all the equipment that we bought in twenty twenty-four. And the improvements we did to the building up there. When we look at where we're gonna come in at on the fourth column. Uh, a million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. The depreciation is going up just a little bit based on what I got. And then you'll see uh, or excuse me, it'll be up at about ten thousand, the rest of it is not really too bad. Compared to our budget. If we go to the first page again, we'll keep looking at that projected change compared to the budget, and I'm on the uh. Third to last column. Payrolls was just a little bit higher. The apples came in a little bit higher. And. Contractual services were a little bit higher. But all along, we're a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars higher. And these are just actual expenses to run that system, and as we all know, things are getting expensive. And so, what used to cost a dollar a year ago, now it costs dollar ten, dollar twenty. And so it just costs a lot of money to run and maintain that system. And next year, we have budgeted one million eight oh three and some change, so we're up just about seventy-eight thousand. On our expenses. And again, we're hoping uh, we're up a hundred and six thousand from the first page on our revenues. Now, this next section is that energy improvement. And Jason, we were talking about possibly we could get rid of that eventually, this had something to do. That was related to the Honeywell study.
Right.
That we sold bonds for, I went ahead and budgeted for it, but I think we're talking about trying to see if we can stop that.
Right.
Right? Alright, and then the other part, this is the sewer system again. So remember, we transferred one uh, one one billion from the general fund into the sewer fund. To cover two main projects, Marion Street Sewer Replacement and Borough Sewer Replacement. Now, once these projects are done, you'll see in the requested line, there's zeros there. But I wanted to show you what was spent so far through ten months on these projects. Once these projects are complete, then the project total will go up into the depreciation schedule. As capital improvements and we will, we will depreciate those over time. So when we do our financials at the end of the year, these projects will not show in the expense section. Because they're up in the balance sheet, we're gonna depreciate it, just like we would a piece of equipment, but over longer years, thirty years. Any questions on that? So how are we paying for that? Remember, we're gonna show a transfer that's coming into the sewer fund from the general fund. And if you go to the next page, you'll see the transfer. That we're doing before the end of the year. Now, the transfer does show in the revenue section. But the actual cost of the projects will end up up in the balance sheet once they're completed. And if they're not completed by year end, then we put them up in the balance sheet as work in process. And then once they're completed and all the costs are incurred, then we move them to improvements to the system. Questions on that? And then I wanted to point out that um. Right above that blue line, there's the interest that we earned on our investments. Or, excuse me, this is the interest on the debt that relates to the water system. So I, so I have it uh projected at seventy-one thousand eight seventy-five for twenty twenty-five. And of course, it's gonna go up to a hundred and sixty in twenty twenty-six because we continue to borrow money as we do the construction on the U S D A project. This is the waters, or sewer system project, not separate projects that we ran into. Remember, we're redoing our whole sewer system, the plant out there. And that is financed with U S D A bonds, luckily the interest rate. On ninety percent of it is at one point two five percent. And the other ten percent is at two point two five percent, all that money is from the federal government. We get it once we pay our contractor and we ask to be reimbursed. So we get that over time as the costs are incurred. So all that's shown here is just the interest, the principal payments on the bonds are shown up in the balance sheet because the debt. Is shown up in the balance sheet, there's not a separate debt service fund for this situation. Because the sewer fund is a for-profit fund, it handles its own debt. It's just like you would do if you own a business.
Yep.
It doesn't matter to the budget, but how often do we draw?
Uh, we draw once a month. We get two bills, we get a bill from Moore and Moore on the engineering of it. And we get a bill from uh the con- the. And we get a bill from uh, the con- the contractor.
LD Dosa.
LD Dosa. Once a month.
Pass that.
Yep, and then we ask the government for the money. And then once we get it, it's usually within a couple of days. There's a form I got to fill out. And then the manager signs it and approves it. And then we send it to our USDA guy, Paul. And within a day or two, the money's in our account and then I can pay all the bills for it. So that is our sewer fund and for the next year uh. We're hoping that we'll come out at two hundred and nineteen thousand one eighty five. And I think we're going to go into more discussion before the end of the year on the water and sewer fund. Uh, as far as uh, rates.
As far as what?
Rates. Because what you don't see here is the debt service. That's paid up in the balance sheet. But when we go over the rates, we're going to have to put everything together and show exactly what it costs to run the sewer, the water and sewer plants. And what the debt service is. And some reserve in case we have to do repairs. But we're going to get to that hopefully before the end of the year. Or close to after the end of the year. So that's our sewer fund. Any questions? Now we'll go to our water fund. And this is run just like the sewer fund. It's a for profit fund. It's called the enterprise fund. It's one of our enterprise funds. And so it's kind of set up the same way. Alright, when we look at our um, budget for twenty twenty five. I want you to take that number up on top there. And just cross it out.
Which one?
Which one? The five millions.
Oh, yeah, that seems a little weird.
Because. We got more than that, but I put it in a different area. To show what we're getting on our grants. That we receive that we don't have to pay back. For the water system. When we did the water system, we got grants for close to nine million. We don't pay that back. And the other part of the funding, the cost of it came from bond sales. But um. This I put in a different section so I can keep track of all the grants that just relate to that situation. So the grants you see up here, the twenty four thousand, that was some stuff left over from the DWAM grant.
That's the lead and copper grant.
Yep, that's, that's completely over, but there was some stuff that came in after year end.
That, that program is over. The funding for it's over, but we still have to pay for it. We have to, we have to, all the cities across the state have to have it all remedied or located. By twenty twenty eight and necessary remediation. They have to have it all identified by twenty twenty eight and then have to have it. Your twenty thirty or twenty thirty five. Has to be.
One of those two.
State gave us X amount of money to do it.
Study, studied really, right?
No, replace it too.
Oh, was.
Yeah, and the money does not cover enough at all. Um, and then we. We have to go out and find it because we have no idea where it's at. This is every community because no one kept records of what materials they used. And then um. Then we have to replace it. Should we find it? So. We have about. Order of the city. We did. It's progress. Yeah.
Alright, so we look at the revenue. Once we cross out that grant number, we can go over to our third to last box. And this will show us what the differences between what was budgeted and what we received. Actual or what I have projected. So when we look at this, there were some connection fees that wasn't budgeted. You'd never know what those are going to be. That's thirty five thousand three hundred more than what we in, we anticipated. Uh, the two hundred and twenty five thousand, that's again. Jason will go into that. Uh, it's a little bit less than what we were hoping, but um, Jason can help explain that. One thing I do want to point out is the interest on the investments is an extra two hundred and fifty thousand. And why is that? Because some bonds you get upfront and some bonds you get to use. Similar to the USDA as you incur the cost, you ask for the draw. We received a little over ten million upfront on one of our bond sales that relate to the water system. And so I'm able to invest that money. And as long as I don't make more than what the coupons are on the bonds. I can keep that money. If I make over more, then I have to give some of it back. But we're making less than a little over four percent on that and most of our coupons are at five or six percent. So that's a nice little thing there. And the reason why that's higher is because I'm not using that money until the last. Till everything else has been used. So we get to invest that. For as long as we can not have to use it, I said. So we're using the other funding vehicles first and then using that last. So that really helped us. Especially when we're a little lower in what our charges were. And then the other thing was the uh, premium on the bonds. I want to explain that. Similar to what we had um, in another area of our discussion. These, these bonds, the ten million dollar bonds were also sold at a premium. So we get to keep that money as well. So that's that seventy thousand and that's just a one time thing from the sale of the bonds. So next year, um, we have some TAFON fees. Uh, we have our charges for services. And we have our interest on the investments. And some late fees. Similar to what we received this year. And also um, other revenues, I got a figure for that. So two point three hundred and seventy five thousand roughly for revenues. So now we'll go to our overhead and this is the cost incurred to run the water plant. So when we look at the uh, total here, uh, we budgeted for one thousand four ten. Roughly, and we came in at one thousand seven thirteen. And we go up here, a lot of it was due to the payroll. Quite a bit of it. And then. We go down to the one sixty at the bottom. That was actually my fault. It was not a number here last year in that budget, so I don't know how that got missed, but. There should have been a number there, probably at least seven hundred and forty thousand. But I got it this year. That's, that's a mistake on my part that I didn't catch. So compared to what was. Really, if you add that one forty to the. To the number, then it would have been a thousand or a million five fifty. Should have been budgeted and we came in at a million seven hundred and thirteen thousand and most of it was for the payroll. So next year, we have budgeted one million eight hundred thousand five fifty. Which is just a little bit more than the previous year. But I do want to point out one more thing. Again, this fund has depreciation. So of that one point eight million, two hundred and eighty thousand of it is depreciation. And what are we depreciating? It's our water system that's depreciation. Uh, depreciated over forty years. Right? Once this project gets completed. Then we'll take that whole cost and we'll start depreciating that over forty years and I'll get rid of everything else that was set up before that. Because we have a brand new system. And I think in that system, it's not only the, the sewer system, but it's also some buildings that we, we did. Some other things that make up that whole project. So once that project is completely done, we'll separate the sewer system part of it. And we'll also set up individual pieces of that project. Does that make sense?
I would have guessed you'd have broken it up, like we get these done to start doing those, but you're doing it as if it's lump.
Right, yep.
Is the building rental um, internal?
Yeah, that's paid to the street department.
Okay.
Yep, and the street department charges all the funds because it maintains that building. And remember, last year we did. Close to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of improvements. This year we did quite a few improvements. And so somehow that equipment fund has to have revenue coming in to substantiate those improvements. And maintaining that building. So our equipment fund is next and we'll go over that. You'll see, you'll see all the revenue streams that come into the equipment fund. And really the way that we run that, it's only the equipment fund, but it's the actual street building, but they work out of. They work on their equipment out of that. And uh, they maintain their offices there. I think Jason's got a plan maybe for next year to move the offices out of there into a different area. But um. I mean, that's where everybody goes for the DPW.
Yes, thanks.
And then let's go down to our state grants. This is what I wiped out on top. So these are uh, the seven thousand nine forty number.
Seven million.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Seven, seven million nine hundred and forty thousand. That's what we received so far of those grants. Notice that we're using that money first. Because we, uh, it doesn't cost us anything and it allows us to keep that bond money invested. And then by the end of the uh, year, we're going to have. I'm pretty sure we're going to tap into all of it. We have two more draws that we have to do. And what we've already done. I think Brian's going to get at least one or two more in before the end of the year. So I anticipate all that grant money to be used up, nine million four hundred and fifty seven thousand. That's why you see nothing for twenty twenty six. That money is gone. We used it. And what's it used for? To pay the contractors for the sewer system that we're building. And I think maybe we plan on having that done by twenty twenty six at the end?
Yes.
Jason? Yeah, so next year it should be done. And you're, and then the other question would be, well, where's the other debt? To pay for that, what is it, eighteen million dollar project out there roughly? That's the USDA bonds. Actually, it's the uh. No, that's the uh, we're talking about the water system. Those are the bonds that we received upfront. And those were showed on the balance sheet. Um, I think uh. And then the other section is just when we sold those bonds, there was some cost to the attorneys and I mean, it cost eighty eight thousand dollars to get that. Bond situation done. Move some publishing to the uh, public, show what we were doing there. And then uh, the last section down here is the interest. That we're paying on the debt. No point goes up to in twenty twenty six.
Yeah. Right.
This year it's a little, it's about half because we haven't used. The bond money completely yet. Remember, the bond money is what we're earning interest on. So we're earning interest on that. But we also have to make principal and interest payments as well. So next year, that debt's going to be six hundred and twenty four thousand just for interest. And that's why when we talk about raising the rates, you'll see what it's going to cost to run the water plant. And service the debt. And give us a little cushion for repairs that are going to happen. There's also um, six hundred and seventy five thousand of that ten million dollars that we sold bonds for is sitting up in our balance sheet. As reserve. For future capital improvements and I can't touch that until this project is on. To we've paid for. It's got to stay there, but we get to earn interest on that as well. And I think that's it. So next year, we're looking to just about break even. But remember, we get to back out our depreciation, which is close to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that's our water system, our fund. Alright, so this is our equipment fund. And this is an internal service fund. It's really needs to at least break even or make a, make a profit. It's similar to a for profit fund. Um, but it's considered an internal service fund and governmental accounting. So when we look at our revenues. Uh, we budgeted for four hundred and forty nine thousand and some change. I'd project that we're going to get seven hundred and forty two thousand. And the main difference, some of the differences here is increased equip, uh, equipment rent. I also. Doubled the rent for the building, which hadn't been looked at since two thousand nineteen. Especially after all the improvements. Made it more like fair market value, what you would pay for a building like that. Especially with all the improvements that we did. That was something that needed to happen to make sure this fund can stand on its own. And who pays that rent? It's all the other funds that are, that get the benefit of that bill. We had some other revenues. Um, these were sales of fixed assets that were not on the depreciation schedule, some older stuff. We anticipate some of that next year. And we also had sell of fixed assets, which is the second to bottom line. In my projected numbers. And those are assets that are sold that were on the depreciation schedule. When I got here and every asset that should have been on there was not on there. That means it just wasn't done right in the past. But now things are being done right and every piece of equipment that we buy that should be on there ends up there. So if we sell anything that's on the depreciation schedule, we end up losing or making money on it. So that, those were two revenue uh, sources that weren't budgeted for last year. And those are the reasons why that number is two hundred and ninety two thousand dollars higher. Next year uh. Uh, we have budgeted six hundred and seventy eight thousand. Which is a little bit less and basically just the fixed assets. I didn't want to get too. Want to be conservative on that because you never know what we're going to sell, but we are going to have some activity. So those numbers could go up. But we're going to set it on six hundred and seventy eight thousand for our revenues. Then we have overhead to run the building. Just like we would any other for profit situation. So we budgeted um, for four hundred and nineteen thousand on the second column all the way down to the bottom. And it came in at eight hundred and sixty one thousand three seventy seven. The main, some of the main difference there was the depreciation. And then also. Equipment rental. And the equipment rental is for the trucks through our enterprise leasing. And it's also a fifty thousand dollar payment for the new sweeper that we bought. Next year, we have it at a hundred and fifty thousand. I know um, Jason is going to probably talk about this, but. We were getting rid of a couple of vehicles hanging a couple and I think the actual lease payment's going to go down.
Right.
Yeah. And then, of course, a lot of it has to do with our payroll. That was quite a bit of it. And then our tools and equipment and so forth is a little higher. And also maintaining the equipment. And Jason, you can go into that, but I'll just say something quickly. In the past, our equipment was not maintained and Jason's done a good job of buying new equipment and making sure it's maintained. Not only because it runs good and the guys are, are doing what they need to do and have the tools to do it. But also when he gets ready to resell something. He gets more because we take that resale and we put it into the new piece of equipment and our cost is down. But a lot of work has been done or a lot of money has been spent to upgrade our tools and get our guys the tools that they need. But a lot of work has been done or a lot of money has been spent to upgrade our tools and get our guys the tools that they need. Buy pieces of equipment and tools that we need to do the job. And it was neglected so bad before he took over that we're bearing the costs of it now. But I think he can say his attitude with his guys are a lot better. They've got the stuff that they need to work with. They can do a lot of jobs internally. Where in the past, we had to hire out.
So we have roughly fifty-four, we'll just say items that we made them that would that come out of the equipment tool. Which would be vehicles, backhoes, front end doors, tractors, so forth. When you break that figure down of vehicle maintenance, which is seven eighty. If you go off of what we're what we project, just figure if it was a hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at eighteen hundred dollars per piece of equipment, which includes oil filters, oil, uh tires for vehicles and so forth, so it looks like we're it's really rotten vehicle maintenance for bringing vehicles. But what it is, if by the time you break it down and averages it out, it's eighteen hundred bucks for a piece of equipment. But like I said, a lot of it's diesel. A lot, there's a lot of grease, a lot of oil, oil filters are extremely expensive for diesel.
And I think also when you send that work out, the stuff that you can't do internally.
Right.
It's expensive.
It's very expensive. We pay uh a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for one shot uh in town that does phenomenal work. One fifty. And so, but they but they handle everything that we can. But we do have a state certified mechanic um that does work for us and also does work for public safety, so we're trying to keep our costs down, but get through more.
So when you look at our projected number compared to what we're gonna ask for in our budget, um we're about thirty-three thousand dollars lower. So when you take our revenues and our expenses here that we've gone over, and then we add our transfer in based on our deficit elimination plan for next year. We hope to break even down at the bottom. So we work really hard to try to balance that budget. And remember, this includes depreciation. Let's go with that number. That's back on the first, it's back on the first page.
Yeah, wow.
See that right there, that depreciation number? That's what's gonna get us out of our deficit elimination plan. So included in those expenses is almost three hundred thousand in depreciation. But again, back in twenty-four, when we bought all that equipment and did all those improvements, there was a reason why we did that. But it put us a little upside down that year and that's why we had to do that deficit elimination plan. But I think the way we're rolling here in twenty-five and end up in twenty-six, I think we'll be fine. That's all I got.
Any questions?
Yeah, so there's still two more funds that I really have to go with you guys. These are our street improvement funds. Ones that end dot street improvement fund and the other one is our uh uh street uh our regular street improvement fund. But there's so much going on there, I just did not get a chance to get into that and make sure it was correct the way it should be. So maybe another hour sometime next week or
Next week?
Or maybe, I don't know. Let's see, when we get back, what day do we get back from Thanksgiving? Do we uh we do we have a meeting on the first?
We do.
Alright. I could do that in thirty minutes, because I'm on a plane.
Yeah.
But we're supposed to approve.
Wednesday morning.
No, the second, maybe December first.
I needed two meetings.
Or the other way I could do it is I could get it ready, ship it out to all you guys. You could look at it. I'll try to put really good footnotes in it. And if you have any questions, you can email me, you can call me, whatever you want.
And we also had instances where we've done the final approval at the beginning of January as well. You know, it's not ideal.
But I'll be back off my vacation on the seventeenth, so.
Is that calling?
That is.
Okay, I was like, where did that come from?
I didn't know you were listening, Tom.
Hey, Colin.
Yeah, so I just, just, just so council's aware, the uh in our charter, the budget adoption procedure, so the 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 council has to adopt the budget by resolution at a regular meeting held before the end of the year, so it can't be a special meeting, so it has to be adopted by the second, at the second meeting in December and there has to be a a public hearing on the proposed budget at least one week before its final adoption. So just, just so you're aware of those time constrictions when you're planning.
So why don't we? I don't know what people's schedule is next week. I'm sure no one wants to meet next week. But in light of that. We probably have to.
Well, I feel you, what I would say is you could get it to us by the end of this week.
Okay.
Send it to us by email.
Okay.
And then, I don't know, what's Monday like? On the fourth?
I can't do Monday. What about you, Dan?
Well, council can, council can do the, if, 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 just so council's aware, I mean, you can hold the public hearing prior at the, at the first meeting in December and just go over what, whatever else uh Dave and the manager have to go over at the study session at the first meeting in December.
Yeah, so we need it maybe six o'clock and then the regular meeting at seven.
Yeah.
Go to those last two funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Still, I still have to meet with the EDC. Those are full funds.
Yeah.
And so you heck, you guys ultimately have to approve those as well.
Oh, absolutely.
And you may wanna go over those as well, especially
Yes.
the EDC.
But they won't get, they won't get board approval until the fourth.
I'm just meeting with them and helping them.
Well, it's gonna happen Thursday, uh I think tomorrow morning.
Well, with, we keep in mind with their board, the, we have to approve their budget before they approve their budget per their bylaws.
Oh, I thought it was the other way around.
It's, it's an, it's an, it's an interesting scenario. Their bylaws literally say we have to approve their budget and then they approve theirs. So I mean, really what they send us is their recommendation. We approve it and then they vote on it.
So we could do that on the first.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that on it. If you send it to us on Friday before, we'll have a chance in the weekend to review it so that it's not, they're gonna walk us through everything.
I'm meeting with the new CEO and Bruce as well, so between all of us, I hope it, I hope I can get it done. I don't know if they wanna do it, if they want my help. I don't know yet.
What happened done in the past because both of them, I hope they haven't gone through a budget.
Bruce has.
Yes. Bruce has, but not, oh, was it as director?
Well, he was on the executive.
He was on the board.
He's on the executive committee. And he was a treasurer, so.
And there were a lot of concerns.
Yeah, the budget that was initially put out was a disaster. Incredible.
I think we've learned a lot. Could go well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it'll go fine. But I'm not sure if they're gonna say, okay, can you do the budget? Or if they want me to do the other three funds. The you know, the TFA, the Brownfield and the revolving loan fund and they wanna do the EDC. I don't know.
Well, they've been, they've been keeping track of those two other funds.
Yeah, there's, there's four funds that I send them monthly financials on.
So I think that confident that the two of them probably will be able to put together a budget based on your numbers that you gave them for the last year at this year and so. With no aspiration of a new.
Right. Any other questions or comments on the budget items before us?
It makes sense for us to restate our plan, just so we're all on the same page. How we're gonna get to to uh kind of prove budget before the end of the year.
Study session.
I don't think I can do it.
So we'll review the final budgets in the study session prior to our regular council meeting on the first.
Study session review.
Prior to that, prior to that, David will send us the remaining funds that we need to review. Then after the study session, we'll have a public meeting, discuss the budget and then approve it. Second meeting in December, we'll approve it again.
So when I meet with the EDC tomorrow morning, should I let them know that something has to be
Yes.
in the email to the council people here by end of day Friday.
Yep.
Yes.
So you have the weekend to look at it.
Yes.
If possible.
If the end of the day, which Friday, which Friday?
This. Or December first, Wendy? We need that that far in advance.
Well, the concern is, is it, well, we could say Wednesday, I suppose, but I mean the twenty-sixth is a pretty quick turn.
Yeah. Yeah.
Gives them a week.
That might be a heavy lift. But city hall operations, are you, are we closed down Friday after Thanksgiving?
I'm pretty sure. I mean, I think we're Thursday, Friday.
Jill's saying yes.
Yeah.
So then, yeah, then if we can get it Wednesday, then.
Wednesday of next week?
Yes.
Okay.
And our meeting is going to be six o'clock or six thirty?
Six o'clock.
On the first?
Yes.
Yeah.
Study session first and then.
Thank you. And I appreciate your patience, but it's, I'm trying to work this in while I've got my regular duties, so.
Actually, by charter, the manager's supposed to provide the budget without the finance director.
Yep.
So he has stuck up to the plate based on the monitor turnover. We appreciate his efforts.
Absolutely.
Do we have, we do have public?
Oh, yeah, public comments. Hi, my name's Nancy Doyle. I am on the Arts.
Anywhere you want.
Anyway.
This is just, most people don't know my background. Vivian may or may not remember, this is not my first city budget rodeo. I worked for the city of St. Pete Beach in Florida and I worked for the city of Rona Park in California, so I am, again, this is not my first budget rodeo. I am just here to say thank you for supporting the Arts Commission. I know we did increase our budget and I greatly appreciate your support. So does Mary, so does Juanita. I've been in the arts game for forty years now. Nobody do the math. I did it coming out of the womb. Uh I've never seen the support for the arts like this community has come together recently to do. And I wanna thank you for that. We received forty-one hundred dollars from the L B Community Foundation General Fund to support our efforts next year. Another thirteen hundred for youth programming. We're excited about that. Um the Dobbins family just uh invited us to apply. Um not Castor Cares, not fulfilled business, but the Dobbins Foundation. That's a first for me in ten years. So again, thank you. If anybody has any questions about the direction we're going, I'm happy to ask, answer them now. I am working on some policies. That's kind of my strength. So, thank you.
Open house ribbon cutting?
Thank you. I'm also supposed to say, please join us tomorrow. Five thirty, we open in tomorrow at five thirty is a ribbon uh cutting ceremony. Mary would have been mad if I forgot to say that. Thank you. Of course, a little nervous. I haven't been speaking in front of a city council since two thousand and two thousand and eight, two thousand ten, something like that.
You always welcome.
No, fourteen, I, no, with the city of Rona Park in two thousand eight. Oh, I did?
I was on city council.
How'd I do back then?
It's great.
Oh, awesome. How'd it be the day?
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate that.
Activities and programs and you're doing a good job.
Thank you. And again, with my mucklebeef hat on. I love these two guys.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, guys.
And then we hear from oh, council member cameras. We hear from Councilman Williams.
Yes, we asked that he be excused.
Do I have a motion?
Support.
All in favor, say aye. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Support.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned, seven thirty, yeah.